We have missed you more than you will ever imagine. And welcome back. All of our thoughts and everything about you and your family and we're all here for it. Welcome back. Thank you. Okay, public comments. This is the time for folks in the audience to speak on items within our jurisdiction, not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to speak, please.
Hi, Board. My name is... My name is Boris Karik and I'm the representative of CRNR. Previously, you may remember Shelley. I'm basically the refresher. I'll be working with you guys at the sanitary district and the city of Costa Mesa. A little bit about me. I was born in India. I was raised in Orange County in Moon Park in Oklahoma. Kind of split between both cities. I went to UCLA from undergrad. I majored in econ, minor in natural science. From where I come, I could say that I've pretty much been sustainable as a cultural thing, considering that my family raised me as vegetarian with sustainable eating habits. And when I got to UCLA, it really, I really got to understand sustainability and how you can apply that in the real world. And that's probably where my passion grew. So, you know, I'm excited to work with you guys. I'm excited to help us reach the goals of AB 32, of AB 1826, of the other ones, 341, and to overall just find more efficient ways of utilizing waste. So, I'm looking forward to working with you guys and thank you for having me.
Do you have cards?
They have amazing cards. I will.
Brand new.
I'm a little under two weeks in, but when I have them, I will definitely give us an envelope.
Okay, thank you.
Well, you've got some big shoes to fill, but I'm sure you'll be able to take over for Shelley. We welcome you and look forward to working with you. And those are the guys you obviously are going to be working with, but you're always welcome in our meetings. And again, I'm a UCLA fan, even though I didn't go there, so our secretary may not want to talk to you for a while because she's from another...
That's right. I almost liked you.
Of course. The Harper of the West, San Jose State.
But we have two Cal State Fullerton guys up here, so we have to know where the rest is and don't care.
That's right.
Welcome. Welcome. Been looking forward to it. Thank you so much. Okay. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak? So no one will close the public comments. Go to item of study number one.
I think Mr. President, Ted Roberts speaking in your board. Good morning, President Schaefer and members of the board. Good morning, Ted Roberts. Your code enforcement officer for the district will be presenting the January 2018 code enforcement officer report. I'll start with items to note. The proactive scavenging investigations that were conducted for the month of January 2018 had a total of six contacts throughout the city. Of note, I don't mention before the board, because I don't have any documentation, I do have quite a substantial amount of scavengers detected, but they do flee the area. I think the fact that we do have marked vehicles and a presence, a marked presence in the community, I think word has spread because more times than not, if I am observed coming down the street, most folks will leave expeditiously. So, for the month of January, there were a total of six that succeeded in contacting. 501 Bernard Street, 3300 Block at California Street, over by Moon Park, 424 Ford Road, 2254 Minor Street, 2966 Pepetree, and another one around the corner from Pepetree, 2900 Block of Royal Palm Alley. All those contacts were recorded and logged, nothing, no two reports from board, no contacts at the negative. Moon Park, as I stipulated, I'm sorry, excuse me, as I stated last month to the board, seems to be the gateway entry point into our community. And Mr. Schaefer, I'm aware of your concerns in that area. So I've stepped up my early morning patrols in that area. Even days that I'm not assigned to that district, you know, if it's a quiet portion of the town, I'll swing over into the northwest corner of the city. It's all like that traffic essentially that's coming into the town. For the month, had an uptick in trash containers. I don't have an explanation beyond there were just quite a lot. 109 violation notices were issued from the community. And yeah, that's, we've been averaging about 90 to 100. And I saw it kind of downswing until a while, but it has started to reemerge. So 109, spread equally, as is the nature of the beast with trash containers. It's all throughout the community. There's no real problem area I could assign. No graffiti of any note. And as always, I did put a scavenging report at a glance map for you to benefit at the end of the report. Do any members of the board have any questions regarding the report?
In the contract carrier, we have a scavenger. And she wears a little straw hat, you know, and she goes around and she goes right through all our trash. She's been doing it since January that I know of, but I wasn't around, so I couldn't say anything. But anyway, if you could kind of check on that. It's on a Wednesday that we have our trash.
Sure.
But I mean, she really goes through and, you know, and it bothers me because I don't like that.
Not at all. Appreciate it. I'll take a peek for you. Yeah, I'll contact you after we get the specifics out in the description of the video.
The one I know, yesterday morning going into my office, there's a, there's an alleyway that hits Baker Street, goes north. The alley directly behind my office, they all have, they have bins, you know, all those landlords. But the apartments that go north up to, I can't remember, one of the spice streets there. There was a guy coming through there yesterday morning. Barrels are out, so their pickup must be Monday. He came through there with a huge bag of stuff. So that would be Monday morning on that alleyway and then over into the spice streets.
Okay, gotcha, sir. Okay, two of those contacts that I had, one was on Pepetree and the other one was on Royal Palm. Just on either side of the apartments, right there, that border, that Pepetree complex into the city of your office. I tried to scan that area because that's a, that's a pretty problematic zone. I'll probably spend a good 45 minutes, an hour of my shift on that day in that alley because that's truly where I'm going to find the folks.
East side alleys don't seem to have the same problem. I don't know. At least we haven't seen them on your report.
I try to spend a lot of time on the east side and I agree with you. Most of the traffic that I know as far as the transients or the scavengers is concentrated right around the 19th Street, 18th Street, 17th Street area and probably about two blocks east or west of Newport Boulevard. You don't see too much penetration into the residential traps, like for example, like Irvine Avenue. I think I've never seen one up there for whatever reason. I don't know if it's, I really don't have an explanation with the logic. Maybe just they don't want to block that part.
Any other questions for the report? Always. Thanks, Ted.
I can tell you, I've quit running when I see this vehicle because I recognize, you know.
And most folks know it's hot.
It's, I think it was a great idea to mark the vehicle because it's purely, you know, there's no doubt. You know, sometimes I get this night comment, you know, code enforcement, you know, yep, over here. So we're definitely a visible deterrent in the community.
I always wondered how the referee would pay for his coffee. I know he doesn't have much money, so.
I've never seen him run.
The running part is. Very good. All right, Scott, the organics report.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're just taskable for answer questions.
Any questions for staff on the organics report?
I just have one.
Go.
You know, it's very difficult to get those little organic bags to go in that little bucket. And I thought smart and fine will have them, because that's where my husband lives together. And I spent over an hour there. I had every single person out, you know, even the cashier said, oh, leave a couple, you know, and they couldn't, they said, we never have. And they did. But anyway, it would be nice to know and to kind of publicize where the heck you get them. I finally went to Amazon and I should be getting it today.
To fit in the base, to fit in the bucket?
Yeah. And you can get a hundred for eight dollars.
The organic ones?
Yeah. They say compost, but I mean, that's the same.
We used to have, when we rolled out the organics, we did have a list of stores because I remember Elizabeth and I actually physically went to all the stores and see if they sold compost.
That's why I worked since then.
But well, we'll see and we'll find that list and they're not currently on the website.
Yeah. It'd be good.
Many people use it.
Perfect.
Was that, but many people use it.
What is happening?
You know, I don't know the, we have an account, how many we picked up. Are they using it? I don't know. I don't, we use them here. We use it here. You know, in our kitchen, we have our bucket, we use it.
And residents are still coming in to pick them up.
Are they?
Hate it.
Is that a...
The kitchen has pails.
Oh, the pails, yeah.
Is it, are you still on our website?
Yes, yes.
We use them for trash. I use them to wash their cars.
We're not sure.
My wife gave up on it because...
The ants.
The ants.
I use a religious one. I believe in it. And I was down in my lost organic bag and that's why I was on the hunt.
We decided paper bag. Of course, try to find a paper bag anywhere.
Yeah.
We shop.
I just use little bowls in the refrigerator and so it doesn't attract ants and it doesn't require a bag.
Yeah, my wife uses a plastic bag.
A little fraction, a little plastic.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, item three.
Again, taskable. Any questions?
Any questions? 6168, that's where we were. Okay. No questions? We'll go to the legislative update then.
I think, Mr. President, Gina is not here today. She had to take some mercy leave, so I will be giving this report. In your package is a narrative of the proposed bills in Sacramento that may or may not impact the district. The first one I wanted to share with the board is really the elephant in the room, the big one, SB 623, which proposes to charge either a dollar to $10 a month on people's water bills. And that one's been set up for a big fight, we believe, in Sacramento. A lot of the, CSDA does oppose this bill, as well as all the other associations in some water districts have, I believe, made some water districts opposing this bill as well. So that'll be interesting to watch. The one I do want to mention also is AB 196, Greenhouse Gas Reduction Fund. If this is passed, there might be some funding for water wastewater agencies to fund repairs of our sewer system. CASA and Aqua support this bill, so I'm not sure why CSDA is watching it. I suggest that we submit a support letter on this bill. That's my suggestion.
Is that funding from the state or from the federal government?
This would be funding from the state. Money is generated from the greenhouse gas reduction fund, and so from that fund it'd be used to help offset costs for water wastewater repairs. So definitely, I think that's...
It'll be interesting to see how all these infrastructure bills that are coming through the state legislature, it's going to be interesting to see how they play based on what the president is saying, you know, dumping trillions of dollars. But the onus of all those bills really is going to fall back on the local jurisdictions because the, out of the trillions of dollars, I think the feds are only going to put up, only put up a couple of million dollars or something. So I don't know how that's all going to play, but the, back to the water bill, you know, Mesa Water is making a big pull. I think they're one of the lead agencies in Sacramento that are fighting this thing, if I remember right. The funding is really to provide water for people who are in disadvantaged areas?
Right. Yes, correct.
How does Costa Mesa fall into a disadvantaged area as far as provide? Do we have to pay for everybody else?
No, I said, we would fund disadvantaged communities that have water systems. So basically subsidizing other communities.
Okay, that's, so that would be the big deal.
Yeah, that's what, that's what the fight's for. Why, you know, so that's, you know, why, why should we subsidize other people? Well, it's a good cause, you know, we shouldn't be paying for that personally, you know, locally. So that's a big fight. Another, so again, I suggest we submit a letter of support to AB 196. Another bill we'll be watching is AB 444, Medical Waste Home Generated Medical Waste Program, where this bill, if passed, will, the state will adopt some collection programs for sharp generations. So if this bill passes, it could have an impact on our sharps pharmaceutical programs, maybe reducing our cost. So that's definitely someone we want to watch further. Other bills that I thought of interest, the next one was, this was, this is what I call my, the oops bill, the AB 1288, the management funding. And basically what I call the oops because, you know, the state's been pushing really hard for this 75% diversion and a lot of cities are now diverting organic waste away from the landfills. Well, what does that mean? Less revenues generated by the state because that's where they get the tipping piece. Oops, we didn't think about that. So now they gotta find another way to generate revenues, right? So that's what this bill is. It is, there's no way specifics, but they're trying to find how they're gonna, how they're gonna increase revenue from cow recycles. So I thought that was kind of interesting to watch that, that bill. I think that's...
1750, you want to mention that?
1750. What page is that on?
Oh, it's just the sexual discrimination for elected officials. Think we're watching it?
Yes. Every, with the exception of what I just told you, everything's being watched right now except for that one guy that we should send support. But if you want to, what was it?
1750.
Oh, here it is. Let's see.
In other words, an elected official gets sued for sexual harassment and the agency pays for it? The elected official has to pay the agency back, I think, right?
So that would require an elected official to reimburse the public agency if that pays any compromise or some, uh, plan or action. Yep, so I mean, sure, if you want to support that or oppose it, we can do that.
Let's watch it.
Okay.
Don't touch me.
I think that's nobody.
I think that's, that's pretty much all the bills I wanted to highlight. Oh, one last item though, one I'd like to highlight is AB 2003, Public Contract Sanitation District. Basically, when we're bidding out a project, there are certain requirements we have to notice those bits. We have to put it in the newspaper twice, a certain amount of days. If this bill passes, it gives us the discretion of how we want to notify those notices. We can simply put it on our website and we comply with the law. It'll save us some money, really. So I think that's an interesting bill to watch as well. So we could, it's right now being watched by CSDA. No one's supporting or opposing it, but it's definitely of interest of us to watch. This is 2003, AB 2003.
There's a bill that I think was mentioned in Waco where they're going to, where they would like to prohibit watering the parkways. And that's another thing Mesa's can spend a lot of time trying to defeat because it would decrease their watering, but it would be an advantage to us because it would also decrease green waste. Likely the replacement would be, would mean less grass or no grass because no grass would be less grass. So I think it's something that we ought to at least be aware of and potentially support irrespective of Mesa's feelings.
You know, the city gives Mesa's putting all this, between the streets of essentially ...
Newews?
...villas and they've got, they're watering the water blocks, you know, watering. Really? I think they're going to be like...
Well, the city wants to, the city gives the number one water user in Mesa's water district.
So if I, if I get some direction from the board, it's okay to send a support letter for AB 196, the greenhouse gas production fund, where it's, if it's passed, it could give us some funding for repairing our sewer system?
That's good. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah. Great. We'll drop the letter for President Schaefer aside.
I have a question too. On AB 444?
Yes.
What's our feelings on that one? Are we, did you say we're going to watch?
Yeah, it doesn't specify what the state way program will entail. I think we're waiting to see what it's going to entail. We want to see what, what the requirements are going to be before we can take a position. So it's still in infancy of this bill, so as soon as we get more information, then we can take a position.
I haven't been up to my leg in this, but I'm starting now, so I will be there the first of March, and I just didn't know if you wanted me to say anything.
Well, definitely, it'd be good to ask why CSDA are just watching AB 196 because they do have a lot of water wastewater agencies, has memberships. Why, why, we should be supporting that along with Aqua and CASA. So we should be supporting that bill.
196.
196.
Okay. But nothing on 444?
No, I think until we get more information, we'll definitely watch that. We'll get more information about the bill.
On AB 958, can you pronounce those words for me?
No, no, I ain't going to try.
And then 937, that, that means there will have to be a separate facility for a mother who's lactating.
Yes.
A separate room.
Correct. A private room.
Private room. Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Item five.
Thank you, Mr. President. Would be a useful to be given for court.
Hey, good morning, President Schaefer, members of the board. The district entered into an agreement with CRNR in August 2012 to provide door-to-door household hazardous waste pickups to the elderly, immobile, and disabled residents. The contract also directed CRNR to pick up fluorescent light tubes and household batteries at the OCC recycling center every four to six weeks. The term of this agreement was for three years, ending on June 30th, 2015, with two one-year option extensions at the district's option. These extensions would have made the contract valid through June 30th, 2017, but they were never exercised. After state staff made CRNR aware of the expired contract and no invoices found for pickups at OCC, CRNR submitted an invoice for services for the period of 2014 to 2017 in the amount of $55,713.54. Invoices up to June 30th, 2015 totaling $22,649 have been already paid, but the remaining of the invoices have not been paid because the contract with CRNR was not, with CRNR did not exist when the service was performed. At the board of directors meeting on February 22nd, staff will bring a staff representative in agreement with CRNR to continue the door-to-door household hazardous waste pickups. And if the board wishes, we can also continue the service at the OCC recycling center. The new agreement will retroactively cover the services already rendered and serve through June 30th, 2018. Along with the invoice, CRNR submitted detailed invoices reporting quantity and type of material that has been picked up over the years. There were a total of 36 pickups completed, and the charts in the staff report illustrate the total feet of fluorescent tubes, number of bulbs, and pounds of batteries collected over the last four fiscal years. I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
I'm not sure if I'm reading this wrong, but when I look at the staff report, it shows an increase in, and I'm really, I was curious about the feet of fluorescent tubes. Now that keeps going up and up and up, and I'm sure it's due to people being more aware that they take those things now to OCC or whatever.
So looking at the invoice, there's different sizes of tubes. So if it's a tube, they collect them per feet, so that is why I think it's been increasing. I don't know if, I talked to Mike at the OCC recycling center. He said that he does turn away businesses and they do keep an eye if businesses try to get rid of their tubes. So I'm not really sure why they've been increasing.
I, but the, the other thing, but I see that everything is increasing, the number of feet, the number of bulbs, the batteries. Then when I look at the, the report from CRNR, I guess it's the invoice, we've actually gone down on what we pay them. If you look at the, if you look at the CRNR environmental services, this is in 2013, we paid $1,714, 14, 2014, almost $15,000, $16,000, $16,000. In 2017, we paid them $8,500.
The invoice is listed per calendar year in the totals on my chart or per fiscal year.
Okay, so we just haven't paid the rest of what we're going to pay.
Right, correct. So for 2017, it does not list the, it stopped in June, so it didn't, it's missing six months of data.
Okay, so I, I didn't account, on that lower amount, I didn't account for, even though we're going up in volume...
Right.
Eventually that...
That number will be larger, yes.
That part. Are we still negotiating with CRNR for all the things we want?
Yes, I think we're fully just getting in agreement with everything, with the exception of, I think, the GPS. We're still kind of engine on that right now, so we're sending a, a letter to CRNR with some suggestions. Hopefully they'll buy off on that. That's probably the point in where we're just heading on right now. But staff is drafting the agreement right now and will send CRNR for their review of the finding to Allen, who will view and will bring it to more of a consideration.
Okay. You know, GPS is what I was curious about, if that's going to go or not.
Excuse me?
Or are we going to get that into the contract, do you think?
That's what we're trying to do. Their risk management is blocking on it and we don't know why. And so...
Especially since we're paying for it.
Yeah, so, so maybe I was going to draft a, a letter to them with some assurances. I think hopefully they'll make them, change their mind, but we think that would be real helpful to our residents. You know, I envision having GPS on our website where residents can find out where the trucks are located, you know, which would be helpful also. It could be helpful when people say that they missed their cans, that we can find out, did they drive by the cans and was the can put out on time? I think it'd be very helpful for both agencies, but we're still trying to get, get there.
Did you let them know that we would pay for it?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Just an update. I had a chance to talk to Dean last week. He called me and had a question, and he would like to, I don't know, I'm not sure if he mentioned this to you, Scott, but he wants to take our proposal to pay for them to their legal folks at CRNR and talk.
Yeah, it's their risk management, I think.
Yeah, and there's some, they're concerned about some liability issues, so they're supposed to be getting back to you this week, I assume.
Well, I think they're letting me know. Yeah, I think they're waiting for our letter to, some assurances for them to, to limit that liability that they're concerned about, so once we get that, I hope they'll hear back from us soon.
Well, can we add them on as officially insured, whatever policy we have?
No, we don't want to do that because they're, they're insuring us.
Yeah, they're insured. We would have, we would be an officially insured without their policy.
Yeah, if we could cover both of them.
Yeah, I don't know if this guy or they would put them on as officially insured because if you do, then you open up their whole operation. I don't know if they were to run somebody over or whatever. Although if they were to run somebody over, we're going to be pulled into the lawsuit anyway.
You, you obviously, you remember the incident happened in Port Beach not too long ago. They're, you know, they're, it's still being libiated over there.
The little boy that was running around.
Yeah, yeah. And they have video cameras on their, on their trucks and those become public records and I think that's some of their concerns.
Okay. Just keep us updated. Okay, other questions? All right. Very much good report. Item six.
Yes, the Vila Report as well.
It's a Vila show today.
Thank you, President Schaefer, members of the board. The district previously had pharmaceutical collection boxes at various pharmacies within the city, but in August of last year, the California State Board of Pharmacy passed the Prescription Drug Back, Drug Takeback Service Regulation, which made it difficult for waste management to be able to collect pharmaceutical and SAR inside pharmacies. The additional time created by these requirements would have made it difficult for the pharmacist and staff to continue to participate in our program, so those boxes were removed. It was recommended that we bring a pharmaceutical drop box here at district headquarters. The drop box was installed in October 2017 and it was off to a slow start, but with the help of social media posts and the article in the winter newsletter, we've been having to empty the box every three weeks.
Awesome.
Recently, staff, staff had to tape up the box and place a sign asking residents not to put in any more pharmaceuticals because they had completely overfilled. Consequently, staff amended their current contract with waste management and we got a 43-gallon drop box, so we doubled the size of it. Many residents disposing of their wanted medication would come in also liking to get rid of sharps. So staff, Scott suggested that we become a one-stop shop. So as of last week, we also received a sharp drop box, so now residents can come in and dispose of both their medical and sharps waste. Attached to the staff report are pictures taken of the drop box when it was completely overfilled. overfilled, so I am happy to answer any questions the board may have.
You know, in the picture, there were, the one picture that showed the, oh, sorry, it's the third picture that shows the containers?
Yes.
I, I brought some in that we have, and I have them in a plastic bag. It seems like, are we supposed to be taking the plastic containers they come in to? Aren't people supposed to be dumping?
No, you're supposed to leave it in the container that it comes in.
Oh, so I screwed up, is that what you're saying? No, my wife screwed up, can you call her and tell her that?
I'll let you do that.
Yeah, so, to leave them in that.
In the container that it comes in.
Why is that, just out of curiosity?
You know what it is, we don't, you put it in a bag, we don't know, we don't know what it's like.
It's not, it's not, we're not supposed to take non, we're only taking non-controlled medication-
Yeah.
So if they come in a supply bag, they could be getting rid of a controlled substance, and we don't know, which is why we recommend that they come in their original container.
Okay.
Um, we, we, we can help the community four days, one week, and five days, one week. Has staff considered, um, putting a unit outside, which would, uh, quadruple the time public would have access to it?
Waste management would not allow it, because it has to be secured, and they're afraid that somebody might vandalize their drop box.
Really? How about CRNR?
CRNR is not, uh, does not have that service.
I, I was, I was thinking kinda the same thing, you know, how banks have the outside deposit box that you have to unlock, but that means we have to cut a hole in the side of the building, and I think what we're doing, they still have the ability to go to the pharmacies that we contract, that's right?
Uh, for sharps, not for pharmaceuticals. Pharmaceutical is just this one, and at the Costa Mesa Senior Center.
Okay.
Yes.
Fire stations aren't taking pharmaceuticals?
They're taking sharps. They'll, they'll, um-
They are?
Yeah, they'll, if, if someone comes up with, uh, in the pharmaceuticals, I'm sure they'll, they'll take it.
Okay. So we have a bigger container now?
A forty-three gallon for pharmaceutical, and twenty-three gallon for sharps.
And then we pay waste management to come pick it up?
Uh, for pharmaceuticals, it's a stop fee, plus whatever, how many pounds we need to dispose of, and for sharps, it's just a stop fee.
I noticed in the, in the financial with you, we haven't spent a ton, we haven't spent hardly anything on this avenue.
No, because we used to have four pharmaceutical drop boxes in different locations, and now we're down to two. So that has significantly decreased in what we're spending.
So getting a bigger facility doesn't really hurt us financially at all, does it? All right, any other questions for Navila? Thank you. I need the Oral Communications Director, can I say anything?
First of all, why aren't we in this one? It just came out from the city. We always advertise in it, or not in it?
It's just a quarterly recreation thing?
Yeah. Um, strange, but we might check on it, because we should be in it, it's really, we advertise in it, um, you know, doesn't really possibly not. Anyway, that's one, and then the other is, um, on LAFCO, I received information about ISDOCs, you know, looking at the LAFCO, uh, amount that we should be paying, because we've been studying it, and, uh, I only got the first page, and the rest, which to me was kind of important, right? All I got was this first page and nothing else.
What I'm referring to is, the ISDOC president, uh, Mr. Fissler, is looking at, assistant Scott, I don't know if you guys have been involved in this, but, uh, a different way to pay LAFCO dues, you know, we pay based on our budget now, right?
Yes.
And Fissler is looking at ways to change that. So he formed an ad hoc committee-
Yeah.
-to look at LAFCO dues for special districts, and we got that one, we got four pages, and the third-
Yes.
Page two, three, and four make no sense whatsoever.
Oh, okay, that's right, yeah.
There are spreadsheets that have no bearing on what they're talking about, so I don't know what Mr. Rado sent out, that first page is really the most important.
That's what I was thinking, and I just wondered if we had to, you know, they didn't even act on it, we have to photo it, or, or at least you, you being a representative there would be saying, we're into this ten million to twenty million category of what?
At some point, their ad hoc committees are gonna have to make a report to the executive committee, and the executive committee, I'm gonna have to speak out and say these should be directed out to the districts.
Yeah, that's what I said, that's time.
And I don't, I don't know if Mr. Fissler has that concept now or not.
I still have, remember? I said, there has to be a process, we have to have time for every agency to be able to-
That's right.
Make comments.
Yeah, and they're trying to get this study, the ad hoc committee is trying to get their work done by the end of this month-
Yeah.
And it's not gonna happen.
But what's the rush?
There shouldn't be any rush.
It's just what all goes ahead.
So, yes, are you referring to ISDOC again?
Yes.
Well, again, this was something that Mr. Fissler decided he wanted to bring up, because he thinks we're paying, you know, we, we need to spread out and pay into LAFCO differently, or have each agency do a different deal.
Well, it was brought up by representatives from the Urban Water District, and so, um, they thought that because they were a smaller agency, um, their, their dues should be less than the other agencies', and so that's when, uh, President Fissler took the initiative and tried to revise the fees.
It was always a third, a third, a third, everybody came a third, and it worked, but then the libraries said, gee, you know, we should pay less too, so, but I just thought that they should do it in a way where we're all represented by, you know, each agency saying, okay, we fit into this A through F category, and this is what we feel would be okay, or we oppose it, you know, something.
Yeah, I looked at the dues that each district pays, and I don't think it's unreasonable based on our, the size of the agency should be the determining, determining factor.
Yes, yes.
We'll see what the ad hoc committee and ISDOC-
I was just, you know, one of the ones concerned about, but, uh-
Yeah.
Since he was not addressing it. Then the SDRA rate for two thousand eighteen, nineteen, everybody got that, so, and, and that, and then the homeless meeting for, um, Thursday, I do have a school party, and, so, it does say, it's Orange County Fair and Events Center, so it would be probably that office, you know, up at Arlington, and, uh, director.
What time is it?
Fairland, uh, eleven-thirty to one, that's all.
Is that open to the public?
It is Thursday.
Is that open to the public? Think it is, don't you want?
So it's on homeless, so Bill Nelson will be the speaker, and it'll be interesting, but I have the paper here.
Is that the Mr. Nelson that spoke to us?
Yes, yes.
Are you going to go with that name, Scott?
I think we have another, um, conflict.
Uh, we're gonna, there's someone to speak on, uh, for the toilets.
He, he can't, it's kind of, it's weird. He's a representative of the city, he's a city employee now, and he, and he serves on the homeless, um, uh, no, homeless solutions, and they've been, they've been directed out to comment on local, yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Is that because they haven't talked about it, has it seen a council meeting?
I don't know, I just, they're just, they're just been trying not to speak.
It's been continued.
I don't, I don't, I think it's questionable whether they're gonna support it or not.
I think probably not. It doesn't seem to be a priority anyway.
No.
It can't seem to get to it before- Get to council.
Excuse me?
It's supposed to be on the agenda for council next week.
Yes, yes.
Unless it goes past midnight.
So she said, they said they were moving up to the top, one of the top three.
Did they?
Again, the last one I had was on this SDRA conference, it's, uh, this is not till April, but it's to think about now, um, that it's an advanced track, and we've done it before on the leadership, and, you know, we get credit for it, which is kind of a nice thing, and it's going to be in Monterey, it's gonna be at the Monterey Bay Embassy Suite, and, uh, so we, and it's the sixteenth, seventeenth in April, so, you know, just think about it, because we would get credit for it, and, and last time, we really learned a lot of things that we thought we knew, like the Brown Act, and things to update, it's kind of a way to update us on things, so, anyway, we can talk about how, how-
It's an intuitive action, because that's our spring break.
Okay.
It's, we have an old activity scheduled. I, I would be in San Antonio for SDRMA every week, otherwise I'd probably never want to, so, just, you know, see the alcohol.
Oh, my goodness.
I can remember.
Yeah, okay, so, it sounded, maybe if you wanted to, if you wanted to, yeah, we'll check.
Yeah, I might be assured.
But, yeah, I, if, we're a select group, because we're the advanced ones, and we have some world-class speakers.
The Leadership Foundation does those tracks, they do like three or four in a year, there's only one that includes the-
Advanced.
-advanced track for people who are already accredited, and that's the one.
Yeah, and so, you know, it gives us an opportunity to get credit when the conference comes up, that we have done all the, these things we're supposed to.
And I think we get SDRMA incentives for all of us going to, so at least-
Yeah, okay, that's it, thank you.
I guess I'd love that. Maybe Scott, depending on the paper, about all of the paint stores in Costa Mesa deciding the paint, I thought maybe we'd make contact, but, see now, it was reported, so they, they are, all, all the paint stores in Costa Mesa, they listed the six papers, they take in old paint, uh, to recycle, so I, maybe we could tie it, Scott, Scott's gonna take here.
It's home depot included, or is that just-
It was supposed to be just paint stores, but they also said there's additional paint stores to take, and they didn't list, and we listed six.
Yeah, but, but, there's a little lip on there, yeah. If there's nothing else, we can do that in the works. Okay, um-
I, I'd like to say one thing.
Say as much as you want.
Uh, there's, uh, three-thirty, maybe that is a finance committee meeting, and, um, there's no closed session on the, the lawsuit, but there is a shared services agenda item that requires action by the board, and, um, in that, in the description, although it's very short, uh, they noted that their ad hoc committee, uh, has been writing letters, uh, to the district, is composed of Fissler and Dwayne, um, and it reports to Adkinson, because they can't have three people on the ad hoc committee, so the staff writes the letters according to the report, or according to this shared agenda item, and then, um, Fissler and Dwayne review them.
For Adkinson to sign.
For Adkinson to sign, so that probably gives you some idea, right, the tenor and tone is-
What agency are you talking about?
Basic Water.
Two basic waters, Basic Water?
Yeah.
Yeah, they have, like Bob says, they have an ad hoc committee, uh, directors, Fissler and Dwayne.
Well, they did at least for this letter writing, yeah.
For shared efficient, now that's another state that they're doing it, right? Are you planning on attending?
I'm thinking so, because I submitted a letter, and I've gotten no response from a particular individual that wrote the letter.
Well, you all are aware that we responded to Jim's, Adkinson's letter-
Yes.
-with a requested resol, not a resolution, but a statement, and the response, the only response I've gotten back is, they appreciated the letter, they wanted to look at the paragraph for the signatures, and then they may have some adjustments, and they would get back to us, that's the last communication I've had. Same with you, I, I don't think you've had any, so I assume, like Bob says, that their Thursday meeting, they're going to discuss that in open, in open session.
Well, it'd be, it'd be the first time I've seen anything on the agenda in a, you know, session, but I haven't monitored it for, forever.
It has to be on their agenda to speak about it.
Yeah.
So we'll see, we'll see if something's taken. Um, I will be in Monterey the rest of this week, someone asked to go, so, it's for SDRMA for the Public Agency Risk Management Authority Conference.
I understand, do you want to help us?
No, we're staying at the Portola Plaza Hotel.
Nice.
That's a newly remodeled.
Newly remodeled, I, I, I think their convention center is finally done.
Really?
That's what I was told.
You can record that.
I'll report, I'll, I'll be able to report that. That's it, anything else? Right, there's nothing else, then we will adjourn our space.